Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the County Commission District Two General Election Candidate Forum. We'll be getting this started here in about a minute. We're just going to give it a little bit of time for everybody to log in and continue to join today's forum. So we look forward to get starting here in about a minute. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, Mr. Patterson and Mr. Myers, if you are ready to go, I say we get started here. So, good afternoon and welcome. My name is Joe Riedel, and I serve as the Chair of Shawnee Chambers Government Affairs Committee. It is my honor to be your moderator for today's forum. As we did in the primary election, we are hosting these forums in a virtual format. So please bear with us as we adjust to this method of providing you with information to assist you in making informed choices before casting your ballot in the upcoming election. On behalf of the Johnson County Public Policy Council, a collaboration of all 10 area chambers of commerce, and particularly on behalf of the Lenexa and Shawnee chambers, thank you for attending our forum featuring candidates for the Johnson County Commission District Number Two. And I would also like to thank the sponsor of our governmental affairs programs in Shawnee throughout the air, Evergy. Thank you, Evergy. The format today will be the same for all of our forums and will be as follows. We will begin with each candidate getting a three-minute opening statement, followed by a moderated question and answer period during which each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to each. And then we will close up by providing each candidate with two minutes to provide closing statements. So the format, questions, and time limits will be the same for each candidate. And due to time constraints, there will be no follow-up questions or formal rebuttal time. Candidate speaking order has been randomly determined with the candidates, and we will rotate throughout the program. Questions have been prepared in advance by the chamber staff based on member input and have not been shared with the candidates. If we have time, we will attempt to answer any questions that might be submitted via the chat function in Zoom. So with that, let me move on to introduce the candidates in the general election for County Commission District Number Two. This district includes the part of Lenexa north of 87th Street to Woodland, and then south to K-10 Highway, and all of Shawnee and Lake Quavira. First, we'll begin with Jeff Myers. Jeff is a 38-year resident of Shawnee and is currently serving on the Johnson County Parks and Recreation Board as his treasurer. He served as Shawnee mayor for three terms and represented two separate wards on the Shawnee City Council. During his time as mayor, he was the chairman of the Johnson and Wyandotte Counties Council for mayors and was the by-state commissioner for Union Station. He and his wife Suzie have been married for 39 years and have two adult daughters and four grandsons. And he is a past grand knight of the Shawnee Council of the Knights of Columbus, and they are members of St. Joseph Catholic Church. A graduate of Kansas State University, he has been an educator for the past 37 years and coached football for all of those years, with 23 of them as the head coach at Alatha East High School. So Jeff, thank you very much again for participating, and we look forward to hearing from you today.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep, Rob Patterson. Rob and his wife Michelle have been married for 19 years and are homeowners in Shawnee. The father of two boys, he is the owner of a small business and is active in the PTA and in the teen booster clubs at his son's schools, and his business is a school district stadium sponsor. They attend St. Joseph Catholic Church, where Michelle's parents and family have attended for 70 years. He obtained his undergraduate education at Kansas State University and has an MBA from Texas A&amp;M University. His career has been in the transportation industry, and he serves on the Executive Board of the Kansas Motor Carriers Association. So, Rob, also to you, welcome, and thank you for being here, and we look forward to hearing from you as well.
Yeah, having this forum, Joe.
Just from the introductions, I can tell, obviously, you guys have some overlap, Kansas State, St. Joseph. So my expectation is to be much more civilized than the presidential debate from a couple nights ago. So in advance, I appreciate that. So.
That's a little clearer.
With that, we're going to move into the opening statements. So, starting with Jeff, as we said earlier with the predetermined order. Jeff, we'll give you three minutes to give some opening remarks. Take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and I'd like to thank the chambers for giving us as candidates the opportunity to express our thoughts and reasons for choosing to run for this office. My mantra is common sense for the common good. The reason I'm running for Johnson County Commissioner, District Two, is because I concluded my lifetime career as an educator and a football coach in May. And with so much uncertainty in these unprecedented times, I am ready to be a voice of common sense on the commission. Someone who offers proven experience in finding concrete solutions to complicated problems, as I've done throughout my time in public service. I will speak with clarity and simplicity to make sure our community is even stronger when we have weathered this storm. I want to provide the services and protection that Johnson County residents expect and deserve. Whether it is the budget, safety services, business, recreation, transportation, environmental or health issues, or the many other responsibilities of this position, I will work very hard every day to earn your trust and respect. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Myers. On to you, Rob.
Joe, look, in the 2020 community survey done by the county, public safety and low crime was the number one priority. We know, we all, it's very obvious how important public schools are to everybody in this county. And parks and libraries are also a top priority for the residents here. So it really all adds up to the quality of life is a high priority to residents of Johnson County. The problem is taxes have gone up at an unsustainable rate, the way the county has taxed everyone for the last four years. It essentially equates to a 25% increase in taxation rate in Johnson County. And I feel like there's plenty of opportunities there. With a year like this, with so much economic devastation to help the residents here, you're going to have layoffs, job losses, businesses going out, you know, probably some more bankruptcies, those kind of issues. And this is a time when the government can really help people by creating a spark to get things restarted. I just don't feel like raising property taxes effectively, $11 million for next year, and then backing off by 2.7 million, still a net raise of eight and a quarter million for 2021, is really the way to truly help the residents of Johnson County.
All right, thank you, Mr. Patterson. So with that, let's move into the question and answer. So as a reminder, each one of you are going to get a minute and a half to answer each one of these questions. These questions were prepared in advance, and we have a total of nine questions today. And in keeping with the alternating order, we're going to go to you first, Mr. Patterson. And that first question is, as a candidate, what are your top three priorities for Johnson County?
Well, obviously, I've already tipped my hand there to making some adjustments in the budget. They're just simply in this time is, this is the time to help out residents by lowering the tax burden going into 2021. However, the priorities are clear. And with that quality of life and public safety comes having a strong sense of support for law and order. And so I see one of the other top priorities for this county is to maintain our support of the Johnson County Sheriff and basically the strong presence that we have in Johnson County of law-abiding citizens and keeping the crime rate down. That's clearly the top priorities for residents that contribute to quality of life in this county. That's, to me, pretty clear. Law and order, and then helping spark the economy by reducing the tax burden.
All right, thanks, sir. Back to you, Jeff, and I'll repeat the question. As a candidate, what are your top three priorities for Johnson County?
Well, my top priority is to keep residents and families safe. Safety services, whether it's through safety services or mental health programs. Ever since I've been in public service, that's always been my number one priority and will continue to be. Secondly, I want to do my part in keeping Johnson County the economic engine of the state, encouraging economic development and collaborating with all the communities to strengthen our economy and business and job opportunities. And third, this will be my full-time job with my full-time attention. And I know residents are looking for tax relief, and so I will promise to be prudent and frugal with taxpayers' money.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff, we're going to be sticking with you on question number two here. What is your philosophy and approach to managing the county budget?
Well, as I just said, I will be prudent and frugal with taxpayers' money. I will not make promises that I cannot keep. As a commissioner, you always want to be mindful of the services you're providing and the amount of revenue that you have to spend. I always look for cost-saving measures. I feel consolidation of services is a good way of finding cost savings when possible. So as a commissioner, when making decisions, you have to be ready to explain the expenditures that you're willing to change or delete. And those are the things that I've done in the past and will continue to do.
All right, thank you, sir. Same question to you, Rob. What is your philosophy and approach to managing the county budget?
Yeah, that's the most troubling issue that we have this year is, hey, clearly, if you're a business and your revenue decreases, you can't just simply raise your prices and expect business to maintain the same. That's effectively what the government's done here, but the county's done is, hey, we've got a shortfall in budget, so we'll go ahead and let the tax rates increase next year. You know, Mr. Myers served on the Parks Board, and you know, there's really, during your time serving there, there's really been nothing on the tax increases that I've seen from that board that has helped mitigate this unsustainable rate of increase of taxes for the county.
Okay, thank you. And Rob, sticking with you on this next question. There's been so much discussion about metro-area regionalism. Please explain your views on regional cooperation.
Well, the Kansas City area, there's clearly that always been that playoff, particularly for businesses looking for TIF breaks. All those type of issues can play off one city against each other, one state against each other. And effectively, that ends up hurting residents by, as long as the tax rates are remaining high, residents end up carrying more of that burden with more of those tax breaks that they're able to play off. And, you know, this is another place where the government ends up being in the middle of picking who's the winners and the losers here. I strongly believe it should be the free market that determines that, rather than who can negotiate the better breaks.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff, same question to you. There's been so much discussion about metro-area regionalism. Please explain your views on regional cooperation.
Well, as was mentioned earlier, I served on the by-state commission for Union Station, and that was just a great experience for me. But not only was it a great experience for me, I think for regional cooperation, it's had an awful lot of positive experiences on residents throughout Kansas and Missouri and other parts of the country, in fact. The county works regionally on things like transit. That helps in a manner of being able to increase job opportunities outside county. It gives residents more transportation options, and it allows employers to recruit from a wider area. So I'm very supportive of regional cooperation when it makes sense, but I don't think you need to give up your independence.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff, sticking with you on the next question. Describe your views on the balance between the distribution of costs and services between incorporated and unincorporated areas of Johnson County.
Well, I think it's important to give both attention that they deserve. Using common sense for the common good is something that I truly believe in when it comes into providing those services or needs for unincorporated or incorporated Johnson County. All of the things that I mentioned as a responsibility of the commissioner earlier is something that has to be in place. I know there's a couple of programs that the county uses. One is the Cars Program. Another is the Stormwater Management Program. I think these work very well for both the unincorporated residents and the incorporated residents in Johnson County. So I believe giving both their due.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Rob, same question to you. Describe your views on the balance between the distribution of costs and services between incorporated and unincorporated areas of Johnson County.
Well, in a lot of ways, I actually agree with Jeff here that there has to be that there are certain, you really got to break it down by the services, and there are certain things. The stormwater is probably the best example that has a fair distribution for both areas. But it's, Joe, it really comes down to kind of the specific issue on these items. And, you know, clearly, there's more of a burden on the incorporated areas. So, but that's almost an issue-specific one.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to question number five, Mr. Patterson, we're sticking with you. What do you believe the role of the county should be in economic development?
Yeah, the great thing that it shows with, given the tax abatements, the different breaks to businesses, how, yeah, actually, businesses can flourish and bring in jobs, bring in residents, a lot of economic development when you do take that burden off. The downside is, again, having government pick the winners and losers. And neither one's really the best outcome for the residents of Johnson County overall. To me, simply, again, really, it's got to be weighed item by item. Hey, the county does have the ability to veto the different abatements and has yet to use that. You know, there are times when that may need to be brought into play because, you know, what we're really trying to do is the residents of Johnson County live up to what they're asking the county to deliver, which is quality of life.
Okay, thanks, sir. Same question to you, Mr. Myers. What do you believe the role of the county should be in economic development?
Well, I think it's very important for the county to collaborate with cities and communities throughout Johnson County, work to recruit business to come to the county. I believe that we need to be a positive force in keeping our county the economic engine of the state. I think we can do some of these things by partnering and securing federal, state, and local funding. And those are ways that the county can really be involved in helping out with our economic development.
Okay, thank you. On to question six, and sticking with you, Mr. Myers. What do you believe the takeaways for the county commission should be for the COVID-19 pandemic experience?
I believe good problem solvers, they plan, they prepare, perform, and then they reflect. And I think that's something that we always have to constantly do. We always need to reflect on what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong, and tweak the things that we're doing right. And don't make the same mistake a second time if we're doing something that's wrong. One of the questions that I'm asked more than any other question is, what is my stance on the mask mandate of Johnson County? And when I see the CDC director saying masks are important, the Kansas Director of Health saying masks are important, and the Johnson County Health Director saying masks are important, to me, that's common sense, that it's important for us to wear masks to keep ourselves safe and to keep others safe. And with schools getting ready to start back up with students coming back in the classroom, if you give them the option, they're not going to wear the mask. But I know school districts that are currently in class using masks, and they're being very successful. I do believe we're going to come out of this pandemic, and I think we are going to be better for it. I think we have to stay positive and have good attitudes and be better at working together.
All right. Mr. Patterson, repeating the question to you. What do you believe the takeaways for the county commission should be from the COVID-19 pandemic experience?
Well, the great thing that we did here in America is, I believe that we pushed it down to the local level to make the decision how to protect the residents the best. The difficult issue that that brought up was really being able to work together and problem solve through this time. Hey, look, the issue became political very fast. It really did not stay purely as scientific as Mr. Myers liked to indicate. The problem is, you really had to take the entirety of the picture. You go to shutting down businesses, shutting down schools, shutting everything down. There is a tremendous impact on people, on their health by being isolated. You know, there's been plenty that's shown, depression, all those things have really escalated. So the biggest issue is to take both things into balance, and that's where I believe the passion has come from, from so many residents, that, look, we've got to get kids back in school, we've got to have the sports back. Let's keep businesses open, restaurants, all those things. And that's where the compromise came in. As much as, you know, freedom-loving Americans don't like being told to put masks on, that really was the compromise to keep everything open and not cause even more damage.
Okay, thanks, sir. And Rob, sticking with you on question number seven here. What would you describe as the top five functions of county government, and please list them in order of priority?
Well, number one is the budget. Obviously, I've harped on that the whole time we've been talking here. And that is simply the responsibility of our county is to do what serves our residents the best. And obviously, I think that clearly, especially at a time like this, the high taxation within the county, it was the wrong way to go. So that's number one. Law and order is number two, and it kind of goes side by side. You can't effectively have an effective government or county without starting from that baseline. Can you keep the residents safe with a strong program of law and order, enforcement of the laws, and protecting the residents? I believe that's number two. Look, along with quality of life, or a big factor in quality of life, is monitoring the schools, the parks, and libraries. Those could really be three, four, and five within that order because that's clearly what the residents of this county prefer. And then really encompassing the whole thing is, how do you go about taxation, businesses versus residents, and all the accompanying issues that that brings? What are the economic trade-offs? But the biggest issue there, I'll keep going back to, is it's just unsustainable to keep raising taxes as much as 25% in a short four years.
Okay, thank you. And redirecting the question to you, Mr. Myers. What would you describe as the top five functions of county government, and please list them in your order of priority?
I think I've stated number one several times, but safety of residents is number one priority. I agree that keeping taxation responsible, that's my second priority. Budgeting, budgeting is so important for the county for so many reasons. And so that would be my third, providing services. The county has done a great job and needs to continue doing a great job of providing services. And those include a lot of other things that we haven't even talked about today. Wastewater management is another important item for the county. So providing all different types of sources, parks and recreation. We've already talked about economic viability. And so that would be my fourth. My fifth would be, I think it's so important to listen to residents, to communicate, and to educate. And so that would be another priority of mine if I'm on the commission.
Okay. And question number eight, sticking with you, Mr. Myers. What changes, if any, to the Johnson County Home Rule Charter do you believe should be considered?
Yeah, I've looked at this many times. I remember the last time, 10 years ago, when the Charter Commission got together. And I don't really see any major changes that I think need to be made. There is one thing that I am very intense about as far as my feelings. I do not think elections should be nonpartisan. I mean, I think they should remain nonpartisan. I don't want to see partisan politics come into local government. I don't think that does us good. I think it's something that, it's one of the reasons why I've always been involved with local government situations because I don't like to get into the party politics on matters that really don't have the major effect on us as a local government.
Okay, thank you. And back to you, Mr. Patterson. Same question. What changes, if any, to the Johnson County Home Rule Charter do you believe should be considered?
You know, I'm mostly in agreement with Jeff on this. Really, the charter's set up well, where you split the county into six seats, roughly equally divided residents. That'll probably be the issue for 2021, is making sure we're still, the districts are relatively equal in overall numbers. The issue with the partisan or not, you know, here's the problem. It's called a nonpartisan election, but nobody has really treated it that way from the beginning. And I'm not so sure that really we shouldn't move towards that direction to be able to clarify where somebody stands. You know, Mr. Myers has been in government quite some time, currently serves as a treasurer for a Democrat. And I mean, it's just, hey, it's there, and pretty much everybody knows it, but it's officially nonpartisan. I think that's already entered, whether we officially state whether it's nonpartisan or not. It's there.
Okay, thank you. So question number nine, our final formal question of the day, and sticking with you, Mr. Patterson. Pretty generally speaking, what do you believe most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race?
You know, Jeff has served in government for quite some time, and that's, you know, hey, that's laudable. Public service is a good thing, and appreciate anybody that throws their hat in the ring on that. However, a long time in government, I believe, is a negative in the sense that it really skews your view of all these issues. You know, essentially, government is a burden on all residents. You know, there is just, it's simply a cost added on to the people that are being taxed by that government. What I think this year, to me, and it's really what motivated me to be involved in this, is here's a time where the government, albeit a tough decision, made the decision to shut things down, and it's done a lot of economic damages. the decision to shut things down and it's done a lot of economic damages. And yet, so, so essentially, you know, people are hurting their, their income, all those things affected. And yet, the government does not make the decision to, you know, if you're a business, lower revenue, you're going to lower your costs. Well, that's not what happens here. You got people much more difficult to pay taxes in these situations. Instead of backing off how much our expenditures are, we charge forward with a raising your effective taxes.
Okay. Thank you. And redirecting the question to you, Mr. Myers. What do you believe most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race?
Well, I believe my experience is a positive. I can hit the ground running because of my 30-plus years in local government experience and my current experience on the Johnson County Board of Parks and Recreation. I already have an understanding of the county government processes and so I feel very comfortable with being put into the position as a commissioner. I believe experience is exactly what is needed right now, not the lack of experience, not really knowing what you're getting. Because I'm a retired teacher and coaching from my retired teacher and coach, I believe that it's important to be able to put full-time into the position and receive full-time attention. And I'll be able to do that. And I think it will be difficult for Mr. Patterson to be able to do that when he's trying to run a business and also try to serve on the commission at the same time. That will not be my situation. It will be my full-time attention and full-time position.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, that ends the Q and A portion, and we'll move into closing statements. So I'm sticking with you first, Mr. Myers. We'll give you two minutes to give closing statements.
Well, I would say to the voters out there, think of yourself as an employer. If you were hiring for a job, would you want to hire a person that has experience and some expert, expertise in the job that you are offering? Or would you want someone that has little or no experience in that position? And I think most people, along with Mr. Patterson, if you're having, being able to pay that person the same, the same salary, you would want to choose that person that has experience and that has some expertise in that area. And so that's what I think I provide. I have the enthusiasm, I have the energy, and I'm ready to do the best that I can to serve the people of District Number Two as a county commissioner. And I ask for your vote and your support.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Two minutes.
You know, Joe, I, I love Shawnee. My, my family, been part of the family, it's been here since 1945. Love the churches, love the schools and really want to do what, what I see is the best for this community. Years of experience in government teaches you one thing. I've got a lot of experience in business and I think you, you look at things quite a bit different in the sense that you, you really have to produce true results or, you know, you're not in business any longer. That's, that's not the way that somebody that has been in government forever is going to look at things. I've got an immense amount of experience on, certainly on justifying both, both the cost and, and the, the revenue. And that's, that's where I think that people need a change rather than, hey, just a continuation of this tax and spend.
And with that, thank you both, Mr. Patterson and Mr. Myers, for taking the time to be with us today and share your thoughts. And that will conclude today's forum for the County Commission District Number Two. And another thank you to our sponsor, Evergy. And today's forum will be available to view along with all the other races in Johnson County on the JCPPC website at votjoCo.com. And many of the candidates have completed candidate questionnaires that can be found there as well. And let me close by reminding viewers of a few key dates. Advanced voting by mail begins on Wednesday, October 14th. You may return your ballot in Shawnee at the drop box located at the Shawnee Library at 13811 Johnson Drive or via the US Mail. Advanced voting in person begins on Saturday, October 17th, and you can cash your ballot in Shawnee at the Oak and Field House at 20200 Johnson Drive. General Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd. Polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So please get out there and vote, and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you.